By the authority vested in me, I hereby declare this meeting of the Conshohocken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before our roll call, Steph.
Vice President Tuttino?
President.
President Griffin?
Here.
Councilmember Sokolowski?
Here.
Councilmember Barton?
Here.
Councilmember Flanagan?
Here.
Councilmember Stokely?
Absent.
Councilmember Leonard?
Here.
Mayor Frost?
Here.
May pro-counsel?
O divine master, in deep humility we place ourselves, our thoughts and our plans in thy hands. We beg thee to fill our minds and our wills with the gifts of wisdom, understanding, counsel, fortitude, knowledge and piety. Help us not to think of self or personal desires, but rather consider the responsibilities laid upon us. Help us to promote as far as possible the welfare of our people and to treat them with impartiality and justice. Grant us the power to set a good example in thought, word and deed, so that thy blessings will be showered upon us and the people we represent. Amen.
President, you to the flag?
President, you to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, President, my announcement is that we had a second meeting tonight before this meeting, and that we got four presentations, but we're moving from B on the bottom list up to number one, and Micah carried out.
Very well, thank you, Mr. President. This time we're on the record, this is the time and place that's been advertised for hearing on a conditional use application filed by Millennium Waterfront Associates LP. The conditional use seeks approval under section 27-1503B, I'm sorry, 1503 of the Conshohocken Borough zoning ordinance to allow a maximum building height of 230 feet on a parcel located in the SP2 zoning district. The tract contains approximately 16.8 acres and the subject tracts approximately 13.6 acres. The applicant is present tonight through counsel. Mr. Campbell?
Good evening, Mr. Svalve.
As an initial matter, Mr. Campbell, if we can just have a stipulation, your, the application that was submitted to the borough, which will mark as Exhibit A for this proceeding, was signed and submitted, or indicated as signed by the applicant on May the 10th, however, it was not lodged with or filed with the borough until June the 5th of 2017. Can we have a stipulation from the applicant that the conditional use application was in fact filed with the Borough of Conshohocken on June 5th?
So stipulated.
Very well. And would you stipulate then that the hearing commenced this evening on July the 19th, is within the required 60 days?
It is.
Very good. Are you prepared to proceed this evening?
Mr. Svalve, as I've communicated to you prior to tonight's hearing, my application to the board is to adjourn tonight's hearing and reconvene at council's first immediate opportunity. There are a number of reasons prompting that request. I had some witness scheduling issues, and I was asked by other participants, who I, other individuals or parties who I think will be participants, based on prior conversations I had with them about scheduling, to make the application as well. Mr. Weiss is here, who I believe at some point will enter his appearance, as is Mr. Primavera.
Very good. So the request then would be for a continuance to a date certain on the record this evening?
That's correct.
Very good. I also understand there are other counsel here this evening that I assume will make an appearance on behalf of their clients. Mr. Weiss, do you want to begin?
Good evening, members of counsel. Ross Weiss, I represent Don Pulver and his interests in the Tower Bridge Buildings, Tower Bridge 2, Tower Bridge 3, Tower Bridge 7 and Tower Bridge 8. And I would ask that the record reflect that representation, that I receive notices on behalf of Mr. Pulver going forward, and we appreciate the courtesy of hopefully your postponing this hearing until your August meeting. Thank you.
So just for the record, Ross, you're entering an appearance on behalf of the buildings identified as Tower Bridge 2, 3 and 8?
Seven and eight.
Proposed building, seven?
Correct, property worth seven.
Do you have actual client identified names for those entities?
Yes, I, I, I will, the deeds are out in my car?
Sure.
But I will bring deeds to the hearing, and I will mark them and offer them into evidence as evidence of our standing.
Very good. Unless there's any objection, I'm perfectly willing to grant party status to your client, subject to your providing verification of the actual entities that you're representing. You can do that by correspondence to me, copy to all other counsel, if that's all right.
Not a problem.
Very well. Any objection to standing on Mr. Pulver's map? Very good. Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
Thank you.
Mr. Primavera?
Yes, thank you. For the record, Carl Primavera, Claire Harrison, I will leave the stenographer with my card. I'm here requesting party status for S as in Stephen, F as in Frank, Roman numeral three, Conshohocken LLC, which is an affiliate of Stabilis, capital, S-T-A-B-I-L-I-S. We are the owners of Unit A and Unit B, part of the Millennium complex, which is the subject of these proceedings. We are in fact the owner, and we will present at the next hearing the deeds and the confirmation of that ownership. And again, as Mr. Weiss said, we would like to be notified of future proceedings. One caveat, I will be away until August 14th, but I understand that the next meeting, in any event, is August 16th. So with that caveat, we're pleased to not object to the continuance requested tonight. Thank you.
Very well. Mr. Primavera, your client SF3 Conshohocken LLC is the current owner of the buildings that I think we identified as Millennium 1, 2 and 3?
Yes.
Okay, very well. On that basis, without any objection, we'll grant your client party status going forward. You'll be entitled to proceed in these proceedings, subject to, if you would, just provide me a letter verifying and identifying your client, we'll incorporate that into the record at the next proceeding. Any other parties wishing?
Thank you.
Party's status? Very well. Then counsel, since the applicant has requested a continuance, and obviously this is going to be a hearing which involves more than one presentation, it would be my recommendation that counsel grant the continuance. We can reschedule this for a date certain on August the 16th, which would be your next meeting. That's not to say that you'll proceed on August 16th, that we may reach agreement to extend it to a date certain at another date, but at least in order as a placeholder, we would, on the record, if counsel's inclined, agree that we will continue this hearing until August the 16th, 2017, 7 o'clock PM here in the Borough Hall Meeting Room.
Are you in a motion?
I'll make a motion for continuance.
Need a second?
Hold a second.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Nothing further, then we're off the record. Thank you, gentlemen, we'll see you in August 16th.
Thank you. Have a good night. Okay, Steph, it's up to you.
Our next presentation will be to consider the 331 West 7th Avenue zoning hearing board application.
Good evening, members of counsel, Mr. Mayor. I'm here on behalf of my client DJB Properties LLC, who has a zoning application pending before the zoning hearing board for 331 West 7th Avenue. Pursuant to the application, there was a, an initial drawing of what is proposed. We would appreciate, we understand counsel has looked at it, reviewed it, we would appreciate your support. Several factors before I turn the floor over to Mr. Brasso, who is the sole owner of the LLC. This particular development, we feel, is in keeping with the zoning ordinance in terms of use. Section 271005 allows twins. The lot is 11,200 square feet, and the requirements of 271005 indicate that for a single-family detached, and we would have two sets, that you would need 2,800 square feet per unit. So we meet that requirement, and with all due respect to the zoning board's interpretation, we believe we do not need a variance to construct two sets of twins on the property. There may be some dimensional variances that we are still trying to play with in terms of driveways and so on, but in any event, we are trying to get as close to a byright plan as possible. The other important item is that when you look at the neighborhood, they are all row homes. 7th Avenue, I grew up there and have a home there, so I know very well, the 200 block of 7th Avenue is all row homes. Wood Street, 600 block is all row homes. Counsel is aware of what's happening a half a block up, further west from this particular site, at the top of 7th Avenue with the development there. So in terms of character, in terms of density, in terms of those kinds of issues, we will make our arguments to the zoning hearing board that this is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood and will not create any kind of an adverse impact. I'm going to turn the floor over to my client, Mr. Brasso. If counsel has any questions, we would certainly solicit your support, at least in communicating that to the zoning hearing board if that's possible, and I appreciate your consideration. Mr. Brasso?
So John is correct in, when we bought this property, we worked with our team, which is John, Joe Estock, who happens to be here, he's our land engineer, myself and my business partner, who happens to be my wife. And we look at the site and we try to figure out what's the best use of the property and what will give us the easiest path in terms of a byright solution. So if you're familiar with the street, one of the things that we encountered when we're thinking about marketing this property to people that would buy these houses, is the character of the neighborhood, and unfortunately, right across from the street is the giant sort of garage storage unit that the township has, which they need to put it somewhere, but it happens to be right across the street, which blocks the view of Sutcliffe Park and some other things. And that was seen as a, sort of a detriment to the lot in terms of its viability commercially. One of the great things about the piece of property is it sits very high up in elevation in Conshohocken. It overlooks Sutcliffe Park, which is great, it's not going anywhere, so you always have green space. And because it's so high up, you capture really nice sunsets as the sun sets down over Tees. But because of the garage, we were fearful that facing properties directly across the street from that garage would be a, a no, a non-starter to potential buyers of this property. So anyway, we consulted with Joe, we tried to come up with a byright solution that, that would work, and this is what we came up with. This is very similar to a project that we are just now completing. It's partially in Conshohocken, it's like 20% Conshohocken, 80% White Marsh, it's right on the border. If any of you have traveled down Spring Mill Avenue within the last nine months, crossed the street from Coyote Crossing, you may have seen those units that we've constructed. We did similar thing here, and I know that land development is a little different because we're dealing with two burrows, but we took a single lot, we were able to create a plan that gave ample parking, and we built seven really exceptional townhomes on that lot. They're being received very well in the market, and we feel it was a great use of the space. In order to do that, we were on a corner lot, so we had to pick a frontage, and, and we did something a little bit differently. This is a similar play on that, and what we were trying to do here is connect 7th Avenue with the alley to give us access in and out for ample parking in a garage, as well as off-street parking that butts up to the alley. And then when Joe and I looked at it, we came up with, we believe, is ostensibly a byright plan, in that all the setbacks are met, all the impervious are met, all the building coverage are met, and within the, within the minimum or the maxims that are established by the code. And so we're presenting this to, to you folks, to get opinions and, and see where, you know, where we can go with this.
Where is the front of these homes? If you're not facing them to the garage off of the main street there, what are you saying is the front door?
So, we take this to loose architects, we've done a number of plans in, in the borough, and the front would either be just underneath these, which, they're listed as patios here, but they're more appropriately balconies, they'll be off the ground. So the front door could either be adjacent to, or underneath the balcony, or it could be around here, next to the garage. So there's going to be two doorways in and out of the property, with the one that you establish as the front and back is subject to what the architects deem as most appropriate.
So these are back lots? Because you have the existing garage here, did you buy that, the two houses that were there?
Yeah, it's one house and a garage.
Right.
All the plot of land.
Right.
It's a single home.
Yeah, I know. Thank you.
When did you purchase it?
128? Yeah, in March 128.
So these houses are being put behind other homes that are already existing, and you're, you're using the alleyway? And you're using how to get to these houses? You're going to tear down the garage, put a driveway in?
Yeah, the garage needs to be raised anyway, it's, it's, it looks like a garage, but when you get into it, it's, it's not today's standards, it's not up to the code for a garage. So that needs to be taken down anyway. I don't know that there are code behind any house, 7th Avenue?
Yeah, there's, there's several homes there.
Well, as you run down 7th Avenue, there's, there's twin and a single, there's another single over here, another single, and then there's the 44 condos, PRDC bill.
Yes.
But to answer Counselwoman's question, the principal access would be through 7th Avenue?
Correct.
And then one foot exit to the site, it's projected either, well, I guess that's a one-way, so I'm out to the alleyway.
I have a question on that.
What's the one-way?
So the, the actual houses, one is, one, the side of one is facing 7th Avenue, and they go backwards on the lot. So you're in essence making a little development on that block. Am I correct?
Yeah, these would not, to be clear, these would not be simple houses, it would not be subdivided lot. It would be an association of governance property, and you could call it planned unit development, as determined now.
So you're going to tear down a single-family home and put up the four?
We're definitely tearing down the single-family homes, infested with termites. What we do with that space is subject to what we talked about tonight in further meetings with zoning land development.
And did you do any design on just a twin?
That would strictly face 7th?
7th Avenue?
And have a backyard?
We look at that as well. What we were fearful of is if we flipped the house to what's traditionally, you might call more standard orientation, the front porch facing 7th Avenue, you're staring right in the side of that main.
But this way they're going to stare right into the neighbors.
Yeah.
Which I have a concern with the ones down on Spring Mill, because they're all on top of each other, facing each other, and it's not really visually aesthetically pleasing as well.
I'm getting...
I, I believe that they're lovely homes, but aesthetically, they're right on top of each other, and they don't fit into that area very well, in my opinion. Did we have any issues with market value of the recent properties that sold around there? I mean, you're, you're claiming that, that garage is what would be an issue, but the recent properties that have sold around there, have there been any issues with market value on those? Do we know?
With all due, with all due respect, we have an expert engaged who's doing that for us, and that will be the evidence presented.
Okay.
To the zoning board.
Perfect.
But it is an issue, because, again, this lot is higher than the neighboring lot to the south. But if you were to face the properties towards 7th Avenue, you're staring directly at the borough garage, which is no disrespect to the borough, but it's an issue, and our marketing people tell us that because of that, it's difficult to sell these homes. So that's why there'd be a homeowner's association, we're not subdividing, and ownership would be with the, with the LLC.
But the property was only purchased 120 days that the building was existing at the time.
Sorry?
You knew it was there.
Right.
The property was only purchased 120 days ago, I think you said, and that the borough building was existing at the time.
And, and again, with all due respect, and I'm sure your solicitor, if he were to
answer your questions, could certainly tell you that some of the case law that's out there says if someone purchases knowing what his zoning code says or doesn't say, it's irrelevant to what is proposed and what can be proposed to his zoning hearing board. The important thing here is, as we look at your current zoning ordinance, those four units are permitted by right to put forth. I understand, you may have, counsel may have an issue with density, but again, I go back to the whole area there with row homes. But if it's permitted under your zoning ordinance that you can put two sets of twins, then I don't see under the law how you can deny it. Now, with respect to what the zoning board does in terms of additional dimensional variances, if they're needed, with respect to the driveway, and we have a discussion with the zoning officers, how much of a driveway is needed, we believe we have more than 30, we have 35 feet, and I think 25 feet is needed for the driveway, that's there, the drive-through. We think we meet that as well. There may be five or 10 feet variances needed somewhere else. We're trying, we're trying to tweak the plan before we get to zoning land development to make it byright, so that we don't have a need for any variances or special exceptions.
John, just, just, just to clarify though, if I'm looking at your application, the relief that you're requesting is a variance to permit a set of two single-family semi-detached twin dwellings in the BR1 zoning district?
And that, that is correct.
Okay.
But that is going to be amended, because in my discussions with the zoning officer, we've had a discussion as to the interpretation, and again, that's with respect to 271002. If you look at 27102 in conjunction with 1005, where it tells you you need 2,800s for semi-detached, we think that they go hand in hand, and that, that allows you, I mean, it doesn't make sense to say you only need 2,800 for one unit and only one unit on a lot. So it's a matter of interpretation for the zoning board, but to answer your question, initially that was our thought, we've had further discussions with the team about that. So I would amend the zoning application.
Because I'm looking at the zoning review, a lot of these questions though arise because of the unusual orientation of the lot. Normally residences, houses are oriented to the street.
Yes.
Correct.
So if you were to take the same application, orient the properties toward, to face, so the front, the front doors face 7th Avenue, as is traditionally accepted, you probably do have a byright plan. It's the odd configuration of the, effectively placing the, the side of the building facing the front lot line that causes you to have these sort of zoning irregularities.
And I think that's where counsel's coming from, is that we feel that the twins are better facing the street, rather than facing other homes, or other homes having to look at the back of their house. We want conformity.
I have a question also, that impervious surface.
And I would just add that I think Mr. Brasso and the team have discussed the possibility of turning it around. What we didn't want to do is to create other issues where we'd have to go before zoning to get variances for side yards or rear yards, but there may be a plan that we're working on to make it byright totally, so we wouldn't even have to go before the zoning board.
Well, it seems you're heading to zoning anyway.
Yeah.
It seems like you're headed to zoning anyway.
Well...
Or you're at least looking that way.
John, I have a question about impervious surface. What is the percentage? Because that looks like there's very little grass left on the property.
According to what Joe and I laid out, it's, it's within the impervious.
But what is the percentage? I'm curious.
I agree, 60 or 65 is maximum that dish.
So there is some grass that, where would there be any yard or landscaping?
Grass, all through here.
What is this 1, 2, 3, 4 along the alleyway?
That's their parking.
That's parking?
That's additional parking space.
Parking.
So there's a one-car garage? Is there a one-car? And one parking spot?
Correct. My engineers tell me we calculated this at 60% impervious.
And that's acceptable?
Yeah, what's the, what's the, oh, 60%. 60%. Yeah, so right, right there.
So in essence, what I'm seeing you're doing is making a separate block avenue in an avenue, and turning it around. Am I missing something there? The block runs this way, you're going to take four houses and turn them so that there's, you're separating the whole block out.
Yeah.
Correct.
There's cramming in between.
So it's separating the block on each end and making a turned block in the middle of it?
I'm surprised.
Is what you're doing. You're going to have two roads, one on each side, which splits the block on both sides to get into the alley and out to 7th. So you're making an, a separate avenue in the middle of an avenue, turned the other way.
Between an avenue and alleyway.
Correct?
That's how I see it.
I understand what you're saying, this manically, I respectfully don't agree with the terminology. It, it's not a separate block, it is a parcel plan. It'll remain a parcel.
But you're, you're, you're making it a separate entity from the rest of the block. It's not connected.
Every house, every house is a separate.
No, you're putting roads in.
But those roads are private, they're, they're exclusive to this property, so you're not going to have, I mean, it's not a public road, it's not a private area.
It's private traffic.
It's a, it's a private piece of lane, so it's not really...
I understand that, but with the overall look of Conshohocken, that's not it.
Well, either it's, either it's PRDC down there.
Correct. So do you have other properties within the borough?
I do. I have twin on 5th, we built it, other twins on West 5th.
Do you have anything active in zoning currently?
What's that?
Anything active in zoning currently?
We have two, two singles on each that we're working on, and...
The only zoning application, this is the only zoning application.
Sorry, land development.
That's okay. So your other properties are not all bulk properties? If, if you're getting the sense of where we're at, is we're concerned about the bulk that you as a developer are bringing into the borough, when we're trying to minimize the tear downs of singles and putting in bulk.
Right.
So, so that's what you're feeling right now?
Oh, yeah.
So what I'm trying to feel is, are you a bulk builder developer for the Borough of Conshohocken?
We can learn the best on the site. There are sites where I have a single house that is beyond, it's irreparable, and we're raising it and on the same footprint building a newer, much more better-built single. We're not changing anything really, other than updating that dwelling. There are other places where we have knocked down old singles and flipped twins up, so that is increasing density. It depends on the site and what our team deems as the right approach for that site. So I wouldn't classify this as any of that, other than elevating the properties in the area.
Mr. Brasso, with all due respect, what I've heard, and I think I'm picking up from counsel, and I don't want this to go on interminably, but it seems to me that you have more work to do on this application. Before, if you, if you'd like to avoid a negative vote by counsel to oppose this zoning board, I suggest you go back, talk to your engineer, talk to Mr. DePietro. If you really do want to do what's best for the site, I think the general consensus of counsel is that you don't change the orientation of the, of the street frontage on 7th Avenue... of council is that you don't change the orientation of the street frontage on 7th Avenue in order to accommodate an extra house, which is what this very much looks like to someone who is a little seasoned in this kind of an application. I think you need to go back, and I think you need to go back, retool this, see if you can come up with a byright plan that puts in maybe one less house, that orients it correctly so that it's consistent with the street line, consistent with the rest of the houses on that block, and then maybe come back and visit us next month.
So in closing, I want to suggest one thing. Might take in what you said and clear this all up. Joe and I worked through this, and we were trying to do what is a byright plan. We can't, after looking at the code, we can't figure out if any zoning relief is required for this plan as it sits today. So we believe it's a byright plan. But if it isn't a byright plan, but it's not in the aesthetic interest...
Let me disabuse you of that. Well, let me disabuse you of that, Mr. Brasso, as I'm sure John can instruct you. Under Pennsylvania law, the determination of whether it's a byright plan is not left to you or to Mr. Estock, it's to the zoning officer. I'm looking at a memorandum dated July 3rd that says this plan is not byright. So unless and until you appeal that and get a favorable determination from the zoning board, the borough's position is, this is not, to dispel any confusion you may have, this is not a byright plan.
We don't want to fight up against that. We've never come before zoning with anything that we don't think, that we think's egregious or otherwise. We try to make good plans. We did look at another plan. So in closing, the other plan we looked at is to take this lot, orient everything on 7th Avenue, have a twin that is indeed byright. I think you need 50 feet of frontage for that. It's an 80-foot lot, so if you put a twin on 50 feet of frontage, you do the max. You're left with 30 feet. There are singles on 30 feet in the borough, but that does require zoning relief. We thought that coming in with a twin and a single on this 80-foot lot would require more zoning relief than this plan, which is how we landed on this plan. If the collective of the people in the room, as well as the zoning board, feels that a twin and a single is a better use of the space, by all means, we could come back with that plan. I just thought, Joe thought, that that needed more zoning relief because the lot is 30 feet, 40 feet's required, even though we've seen that in the borough. We weren't sure what the appetite would be for that zoning relief.
Just to recap, and I certainly agree with the solicitor's recommendation, and some of these issues, again, are for zoning, and we need further clarification. But as I take it, I think the sense, unless, and correct me if I'm wrong, the sense is that you would like it oriented, you'd like the development on this lot oriented toward 7th Avenue.
Absolutely.
And then you also have an issue with density rather than, or bulkness, as council and Soderowsky indicates. So those are the two concerns. If we could come up with a plan that was close to byright, that takes into consideration your concerns and come back and present it, then perhaps you would support this with respect to...
Well, and I'll ask, David, no, we're not going to promise you things until we've seen the plan. I will say to you, this council, over the course of the past year or so, has been supportive of zoning applications irrespective of the number of variances, if they believe that the proposal and the plan fit with what was in the best interest of the community. So go sharpen your pencil, come back with a better plan, and show it to council.
And just to state a fact is, the corner house was just sold recently, so there shouldn't be a problem with selling. One split.
That's at the bottom.
Right at the corner.
Yeah. But they're not facing the garage, with all due respect. But in any of that, we get the message. Thank you for your consideration and for your comments. We're certainly going to take them under consideration. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
No, we're good. Thank you.
Yeah, I suppose that's, before you start, George, John, hold on. At this point, I'm just, I have to ask, the matter is scheduled for a hearing on...
August 7th.
August 7th.
That's what we're discussing.
Shall I presume you'll either continue that or withdraw the application? If not, would it be council's inclination to send my office to oppose?
Yes.
Okay.
Why don't you give me a day to go over timelines and some, and talk to my client, and I'll give you a buzz tomorrow to organize with the zoning officer and your office.
I just wanted to make it clear while we're in the public meeting that council's direction would be for my office to oppose the application in its current configuration.
Right, I understand. Okay. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is to consider 10102 Far Street plans for subdivision and land development.
Good evening. My name is George Azarowski. I'm here to represent the applicant ACL Development LLC.
So George, just so I'm clear, you're, we have no report from the planning commission. You haven't been reviewed yet by planning on this.
Correct. What happened was, I believe there was, and I'm filling in for Mr. Hughes, as I understand it, there was a planning commission meeting held, but nobody had the reports from anybody at that time. So what we were asked to do was do a presentation tonight before council. We are going in planning in August, and then I think the planners, or the hope is to be before borough, the next time you have a full meeting.
So the only reason I raise that, George, is I would not, council hasn't had the opportunity or the benefit of a planning commission review or any recommendations, so I would prefer if you keep it to, you know, five minutes, big picture, show us what you're planning on doing, and then we can revisit this once we've had a chance to look at a more thorough analysis and review.
Absolutely. That was the plan tonight. I didn't expect any type of recommendation or anything like that. It was just simply a presentation to you, so you got a feel for the project. As stated, the project's at 100 First Avenue, which is on the corner of West First Avenue. Presently, there is nothing on the lot. It's actually a parking lot, I believe used previously by the former furniture store was using it for parking, as I understand it. It is in a BR2 zoning district. What we are seeking to do is to divide the property into three separate lots, of which there'll be three single-family attached dwellings put on the lot. We did get some feedback from borough staff concerning our original plan, and there were some changes made there, too. So with that, I would turn it over to Mr. Estock, and you can go over to the details of the plan for council.
Okay. Since your request of a broad description of the property, as George said, three attached townhouse units facing West First Avenue. What we have is, as far as street is very steep, like 40% grade, and terminate right down that first avenue. What we are creating, a courtyard at the back with brick pavers in which the units, the motors, can enter the rears of these units in garages, I put it in one spot, into three one-car garages in the rear. So they have a parking stall in the courtyard, plus one in each of the garages, and in face of the front. We did go before the zoning hearing board and got the necessary zoning relief. We went to, we were at the planning commission, and one thing that was requested of us, and this plan does reflect a change from the previous submitted plan, was this unit here, number three, was mirrored image, originally having a garage on this side. Your borough manager did feel that it was somewhat concerned about vehicles coming into the garage so close to this corner, so we flipped this to put the garage on the other side. So that was the one change we made. Also, the parking stall was here, so we had garage, parking stall, garage. So he felt somewhat awkward, so we flipped it, and we sent this back to him. The other issue was presently, there's a sidewalk that comes up here to the winter note program across Far Street right here, and then you can take it down the sidewalk to the side. Actually, the radiuses are greater on this corner here on this. And what was recommended by borough staff was to continue the curb ramp for ADA accessibility, continue sidewalks right across Far Street, so there'd be continuation for ADA ramp. However, it didn't work, because as I said, and as you probably know, Far Street is very steep right down to the other line of West First Avenue. Even if you go out there today, you can see that the pavement is scarred where trucks come down there, they bottom out. Emergency services won't even go down Far Street because of the grade, so there's no way in which we could create an ADA crosswalk in this portion of Far Street because of the steepness. We had to move the crosswalk forward into a center what is part of the parking lane of West First Avenue. So we moved it down here, and we bumped out these curbs around to protect these end stalls. Really, it kind of worked out best for both the parking wall on West First Avenue, for the ADA accessibility, where there's an ADA ramp here, painted crosswalk, ADA ramp, and they can continue down West First Avenue. So that was one major change, request by borough staff, that we did incorporate into the plan. That and the flipping of this unit. I believe there's other technical comments within the most recently issued Gilmore Associate letter, and we actually went through there. We have revised the plan and addressed those comments to date, but they were actually the two big plan changes.
So big picture, as Mr. Savanna requested, that's the plan. I would suggest to you that those curb bump outs are like a traffic calming device, almost kind of like what you do on Fayette Street, which is kind of the same look that we're just carrying around the corner now, which kind of makes some sense for the project. So we're open to any questions that you might have. It's pretty straightforward and speaks for itself.
Is there any grass at all?
Sure, there's grass.
To verge.
Yeah, there's, 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 this side yard is 70 feet wide up to the right-of-way line, and there's another like three or four feet out of the curb line. So there's probably about a 10-foot lawn area along this frontage here. There's one between the sidewalk along West First Avenue and the front of this unit. This is even bumped back further, so there's an eight-foot landscaped area in front of this unit. And similarly, on this side, there's also a seven-foot strip in the back, I'm sorry, I said back, on the side of unit number one. In the rears of each unit, we introduced this four-foot-wide planning area behind each of these units, too.
Do they have balconies and porches?
They have a rooftop deck up in the front of each of these units, and then there's a porch in the back. The one thing I did mention, and it's noteworthy, is you see those entrances off of West First Avenue here. So there's a lower level here, but by the time you come up the street and pull into this garage or this porch, that's actually one story above this entrance here because the grade is discreet.
So what I'm seeing, when you come in off of Far East, is the person who lives in number three has to go all the way around this detention facility and into his garage?
It's...
There's no way for him to go directly into his garage?
The detention's underground.
It's underground.
Okay.
So you come in here, you make a left-hand turn right into this garage here.
Okay.
It's all going to be flat.
And what will be on top of that?
It's brick pavers.
It's all brick pavers, then?
Is this going to be an HOA?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, so there will be an HOA.
But we see these simple lots, so each person will have, it'll be their individual lots, but there will be an HOA to...
Or probably a plant community is probably what it's going to be.
For the common areas. But each person has a 2,000-square-foot lot.
Any more questions?
I can release if you can have more questions.
Mike, you don't have any questions, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Hopefully, see you in August. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The U.S. is there.
Next on the agenda is a presentation by Julie Davis, finance consultant from Dummett and Associates, to give a quarter-two financial review and an update on the audit.
So just giving you an update on a few things. As far as the audit goes, we have a draft, which is exciting. So we are on schedule for that. There are a few small open items on it. We're just, we're waiting for some numbers, for the footnotes, really, and we're waiting for the OPEB report, which should be out soon. So we're on schedule. All the 2016 numbers are final, have been entered, and all the audit entries have been reversed, so that everything in 2017 is properly rolled forward at this point. So that's that. When we have a final draft, I imagine we issue it before we finalize, you know, give you a chance to look at it before we finalize it. So just a few more open items, and then we'll get another draft and finish it up. I mean, if you wanted to see it ahead of time, certainly, you know, you could let the staffer and me know, and we could get it to you. So the other thing to talk about is the June Treasurers' report. You can see on the cover page that the cash position remains nice and strong in the governmental funds, and we've broken it out since I was last here, between the governmental funds and the fiduciary funds, so you have a better sense of what is borough funds and what is not. Well, the fiduciary funds are borough funds, but not to be spent. Okay. So looking at the balance sheets, they all look good. Like I said, the 17 numbers are rolled forward, the fund balances are correct, all reversing entries are done, everything is up to speed. Looking at, I'm not going to go over them in detail, obviously, but looking at the budgets, at this point, we are halfway through the year, so you would expect that your budget-to-actuals would be at about 50%. So overall, the general fund, you're at about 80% of revenues budgeted. Now, the biggest reason for that is that your tax revenues come in heavier in the first half of the year. But in other areas, outside of the tax area, things look strong, so that looks great. The general fund expenses are at 34%, so that's a nice ratio. You're overbudgeted on your revenues, underbudgeted on your expenses, although I will say that you have budgeted transfers that haven't been made yet, which will be made by the end of the year. But if you factor those in, you're still under the 50%, so you're in good shape. The other funds are all pretty much in line. You've done some budget appropriations recently, so you're aware of, you know, what's going on there. So that's really all I had to say about the June reports. If you had any specific questions? Couple other things. The last time I was here, we talked about the transition to the admin software. I think at this point, that's basically done. We had, we have a couple minor things that we're going to iron out on Tuesday, and that's it. It's done, and we're happy with how it's operating, and I would say financial operations are completely up to speed. The other thing that I talked about the last time I was here was developing a capital asset listing, so we've started that, and the piece of it that we need from you before we can wrap that, you know, officially go forward with that, is to adopt this capitalization policy that you received, I guess, at the last meeting.
They received in the last meeting, and there's a copy in front of them to clarify the vehicle useful life, as well as the building useful life that we discussed today.
Okay. So, did you change it? No, I...
We stuck with the 40 years for the building useful life, and we went to a five-year useful life for police vehicles.
Right.
And an eight-year useful life for the public services vehicle, with the understanding that our policy that we would like to implement moving forward is that we recycle the fleet with a limit of 10 years of a useful life. So they both fall within that range, and depending on the use, but our depreciation schedule will follow that useful life as listed.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about the five-year life for the police?
Yes.
How do we, how did we determine that? Is it, I mean, we're a one-square-mile town, so it's not all on mileage, I would guess?
So if you look at the actual value of the vehicle, and it's a depreciation schedule. So the, what was proposed was a three-year. We've actually bumped that to a five-year to extend the life of each vehicle.
Okay. Now, by doing this, do we have police vehicles that are currently over five years, that they're going to come and say we need to replace 10 cars?
No, they're going to stick with the depreciation schedule that they had in place, understanding that in your goal-setting meeting, there will be a proposal for vehicles, but nothing based off of what will be if you approve this depreciation and capitalization policy. based off of what will be, if you approve this depreciation and capitalization policy. It will be within the range of what was a 10-year depreciation plan and a 10-year proposal for how those vehicles would rotate.
Okay.
It might be somewhat different for public services, in that the operation was reevaluated, and we are making new determinations on what is needed to efficiently operate within that department. But for the police perspective, they're on a set schedule, and what they will be presenting is the conclusion of that schedule, nothing in addition to.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, so, that's all I had. If you had any questions about any of it?
While you're up here, I just want to clarify, in terms of the useful life for buildings, in terms of future borrowing against the building, that useful life of that 40 years should not affect it. Julie has confirmed that as well. But in case that was a question that was presented while you were reviewing the proposal, just to give you some clarification on that.
Government useful lives are unique in that you're not set to an IRS standard or an industry standard. Government accounting standards prescribe that you estimate the actual useful life of the thing, whereas IRS schedules say buildings are 27 and 1/2 or 40. You don't have to prescribe, subscribe to that, so that, the 40-year life shouldn't have any impact on any future borrowing or anything like that. You could, you could make it 100 years if you thought this building would stand for 100 years. And some, lots of buildings do stand for 100 years, so.
Anything else from Julie, from a finance perspective?
No, thank you.
Thanks, Julie. And thanks, Angela, for your diligence in getting the system up and operating. It's much appreciated. That takes us to the consent agenda.
Mike?
Go ahead.
Shouldn't we do these one at a time, this time?
No, the consent agenda, no, you can do them all as one motion.
There's a couple here. Let's go award the A field project and reject...
If you would, if you would prefer to, if you would prefer to take out, remove item F and item G, we can, we can pull out item F and item G, and we can have further discussion if you wish to do that, and then review the rest of the items as consent.
Yeah, okay.
Is that what you want? Okay. So for the consent agenda, we will have approve and adopt the June 7th and June 21st meeting minutes, accept the June-ending Treasurers' Report and accounts payable, approve the use of the A field by the Chestnut Hill College Department of Athletics as specified, approve Resolution 2715 circuit trails, adopt Statement of Policy to Capitalization, Useful Lives, and Depreciation, and approve the education reimbursement for Officer Sean Gregory.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor?
So that's, that's a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Minus F or G. Correct.
I'll second.
I got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, for further discussion on agenda item F, awarding the A field fence project bid, Mr. Hughes, if you could come to the podium? For any questions?
All right, you guys have a recommendation in front of you? Why don't you just go over the scope of work from the base bid from our budgeting session from last year, just to make sure everyone is completely understanding of what we were attempting to do and what we were hoping to try to get done if the budget, or if the bids came in favorably. Ultimately, what we budgeted for last year was to get new fence in from the building around to the corner of 11th and Hollowell, and then down to the end at the, at the driveway going to the parking lot. What we were hoping to do was to do an alternate bid, to then turn the corner and go up to and through the gate assembly, and get new gates installed as well. The bids came in pretty close to where the budget was. What we had done in the bid structure was provide a deduct alternate bid and offer bidders an opportunity to suggest a substitute product for, at a lower cost. We ran into a little bit of a hiccup where the, a couple of the bidders who happened to be the two low bidders didn't enter the numbers correctly. A real simple explanation is, instead of entering the value of the deduction, they entered the new total amount. Therefore, we have to, we can't use those numbers as submitted, but that doesn't mean that we still can't go forward and ultimately use a substitute product. And the contract, the way the contract is written, is that any cost savings realized by using a substitute at a lower cost are realized by the, by the borough.
So just to be clear, the base bid, we are recommending that you, that they accept, that they approve the base bid, with the understanding that there's an anticipated cost reduction with a substitute product that is of equal quality.
That's correct.
Which would then get it within the budgeted range.
So what I'm suggesting, what I'm recommending, first of all, is the base bid with a substitute product would be within the budget. The base bid plus the alternate bid, which includes the new gates with the substitutions, would be, in fact, over-budget, in the neighborhood of about $5,000. What I'm suggesting is council's consideration to find those funds to move forward with the project, to put the gate in, simply because I don't know, looking at the rest of the work that might go on at the field, if fence work is going to continue down the back row there, if the wall's going to stay, if there's going to be another opportunity to put this fence in, to me, it seems like the best opportunity to get the fence in at the lowest possible cost, wrapping it into this, this, the rest of the contract. So while it will be a slightly over-budget to do that additional work, I feel it's a good time to do it and a good opportunity to do it. So that's what I'm recommending.
Do we have the money?
We do have the additional dollars that are available in the capital budget. The recommendation is being made based off of the fact that the base bid, yes, is higher. However, we would be recommending that you award, and then should a change order be needed, which could be based off of what that substitute product would be, would get you down to approximately $4,000 over what you had originally calculated in your capital budget for this project. However, what you'd be getting out of it are new access gates at the rear of the field.
What you're thinking, Colleen?
I, I'm in favor of doing that. I, I'm sitting here thinking, weren't we under budget on the walking path?
That's where I was going.
That is correct. We are under budget on that project.
It balances out.
Sure. How much was that?
Off the top of my head, maybe Steph knows.
In terms of what the cost savings were? It's significant.
About $80,000.
So we're still...
We're still ahead of the game.
It's just, we have to bring it to your attention, that what you budgeted was $205,000. However, staff recommendation with the, with doing the project as one, you're looking at what could be $5,000 as opposed to an entirely other project.
Correct.
That we don't know what that cost would be.
Why not do it all at the same time?
That's correct.
And also, to be clear, so the solicitor doesn't yell at me, the official award amount, we'll say it out loud, is $239,217 without any substitutions or anything like that. That is the official award amount that would need to be authorized.
And we'll see the substitution before we agree on that.
That's correct.
Correct?
No, you have to, no.
No.
I've endeavored to try to make this abundantly clear. You can't, we can't change the bids once they're open. If you're going to award the bid, it has to be awarded to Oliveri for the base bid and the option one at the number that Paul just read. Once the bid's awarded, next month, we can come back with a change order to make the adjustment, but you can't adjust it before you award it.
No, that's what I'm asking, though. But after we award it, we'll be at the...
There will be another, going to be a change order that comes to you next month.
A deliberate option.
To reduce the price.
That's what I'm asking.
It's just, because they screwed it up when they submitted it, and we can't manipulate the bids once they're open, we're working sort of imperfectly, but we'll get where you're trying to go.
Yes, I was just making sure we weren't blindly saying yes to something we haven't seen. That's all.
And as with every public project, any contractor is, is free to submit suggested alternate, suggested equal products that we can entertain, evaluate, and accept or not. And then in these cases, with a substitution, we would be entitled to receive the credits for the savings in cost.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
If you're so inclined, then we would need a motion to award the bid for the A field.
Okay, I need a motion.
I'll make it.
Second?
I'll second.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
Thank you, Paul. You want to talk about the Hector Street, rejecting or...
So, in, we have asked Patty Guttenplan from Bergman Associates to be on-site, who provided design for this particular project. We, at this point, are making the recommendation to reject the bids that were received, in that one bid was not viable, and the second bid that we received was for $97,800, which exceeded the project budget that is listed at $40,000 in the capital fund. With that being said, Ms. Guttenplan met with staff yesterday to review alternative options for moving forward, potential alternative options for moving forward, also explanation regarding industry standards of what was, of what numbers were used to bid the project out, and a comparison of what numbers we received in. So she is here tonight for any questions and to put together next steps. So thank you.
Thank you. So I don't know if I'm, I know that your borough manager probably gave you our recommended plan of action, or I'm assuming that you have that in front of you?
So I have that in front of me, yes.
You have that in front of you, okay.
So, first off, I need to express my disappointment in what's going on right here.
I certainly understand that.
We looked at you, this project has been drawn out now for year two. We looked at you as the expert to help come up with a viable solution to re-green Hector Street. We were excited with what we all worked through for that re-greening project, and you and your team felt very solid that that plan could be carried out. To see bids that came in at twice the cost of what was proposed makes me concerned about the expertise that we used. I could see being off by 10%, maybe 20%, but you're off by 50%. So I am concerned about that, and I just need to verbalize that. The options that you laid out would have been options that I could have come up with, with the borough staff. So your options don't have me saying yea either at this point. So right now, I think that we need to reject the bid. We need to go back to having a discussion with council and look at what the options are, with the idea that we are committed to re-green Hector Street, and we will find a way to get trees and greenery on Hector Street. But right now, I'm not sure how we're going to accomplish that, so we just need to have further discussion as we move forward.
Okay.
Do I need a motion to reject the...
I'll make that motion.
Need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The bid is rejected, we're going to come back to the table with it.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
I see. She's going with the... She's going with the... She could be the last one.
Next.
To approve the education reimbursement for...
We did that with the consent agenda, yes.
Correct.
Please just do it. You can do the next one.
Unfinished business, yes. So on the agenda for unfinished business is considering the appointment of Dog Park Advisory Committee members, and I will turn that over to Councilmember Tutiño.
Thank you. So the purpose of the Dog Park Advisory Committee is to work in concert with the borough in assessing and recommending, and making recommendations for assuring that the Dog Park meets the capital and operational needs of the community. We will have one Dog Park Committee, which will be responsible for the existing Dog Park on the riverfront, as well as the one that we will be developing. That's the Haynes and Salvati property, which is at West Elm and Caldwell. So I'm happy to... So the committee members are...
The recommendation for the committee members for council consideration.
Okay. Kelly Cunningham, Allison Dale, Marissa Buck, David Rhodes, Luke Smith, Jessica Sandu, Justin Eisenhardt, Kaitlin Rosen, and Mackenzie Brinelinger. So the request for approval for appointment from council?
From Borough Council, yes, for the nine members as listed.
Can we get that approval?
Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Got a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Approval.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to whoever the members are.
Okay, yes, I know one is here. Is there anybody else that's here, by a show of hands?
No.
All right, well, I've communicated out that I will coordinate the first meeting, and then during that meeting, we will identify a chair and a vice chair, and review the scope and duties and develop our strategy. Thank you very much for coming. Looking forward to it.
Also, just as an announcement, there, there will be action to remove the current play equipment at Haynes and Salvati. Notice will be posted on the borough website. This is dependent upon public services' schedules, but it will be happening in the near future, if not this week. But again, notice will be up on the borough website, so stay tuned to that media forum for the date and time.
We got them. We got you. Jane?
I'd like council to consider approving our staff to work on the RFPs for both Marywood Park House and for the community center. For those of you that don't know, Marywood Park will be 100 years old in July of 2020. So in anticipation of the centennial of the park, the Marywood Park Commissioners and council members have been working to generate information to the public and also to ask for community support. We've had several meetings with different civic leaders in the borough. We've had a community-wide meeting that was at the community center, and we did focus groups to gain ideas from the public and the residents, what do you want to see as we move forward. I look at it as the Wood family gave us this beautiful gift 100 years ago, and now we owe them the legacy of it will go on for another 100 years. So we've been meeting with many different historical architects. Councilwoman Marion, Leonard and I have, and Stephanie have met with Senator, State Senator Vincent Hughes. We've met with State Representative Mary Jo Daly. They're very enthused, they're interested in our project. So the next step would be to actually put out the RFPs to get architectural drawings done. So I would like council to make that motion.
I will make that motion.
You got a second?
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
All opposed? Motion carries.
There's no other business at this time, President Griffin?
I have a little bit of public comment. Any public comment? Up to the mic.
Joe Farino from 412 Old Elm Street. Been getting a lot of discussion at the grand about a lot of trucks in the early mornings running down West Elm Street. As they do that, and I'm sure you're probably aware that the road on West Elm Street, coming from Fayette, down to Caldwell, and then up to Conchaugan State Road... from Fayette, down to Caldwell, and then up to Concha Hocken State Road is quite terrible. It's kind of like a washboard. So when these big trucks start running over this pavement, the noise is just unbearable, especially to the people that live right in front of it. We have a member in the audience here whose tenant has called her many times in the recent weeks and is complaining that, you know, he's losing sleep. And as it goes on, the Facebook pages, as you can imagine, many people chime in and agree. So the question is twofold, I guess. Is there any sort of restrictions we could in place, knowing that it is a state road of trucks late at night? And/or is there any ever, any talk about getting the road either repaved or reconstructed to handle such weight?
Well, the short answer is if you have complaints about traffic on the road, it is a state road. There's not much we can do to regulate or limit truck traffic on a state highway. You could call District 6 to Pendott and lodge a complaint with them. The remainder, as far as resurfacing, again, that's something that, it's on the state to resurface state highways. So if you called District 6, they could probably tell you where on the tip schedule they are to resurface or repair that road, but that's not something we would have any influence over.
I mean, as far as influence goes, wouldn't it be a little stronger coming from the borough of Concha Hocken, understanding that the road is so poor there and it's essentially...
Sure, we could certainly have the borough call Pendott as well, but just us alone, believe it or not, doesn't make that much difference either. If they start hearing it from us and constituents, the big difference between the borough and you is you all vote and the borough doesn't have a vote. So when constituents complain, Pendott tends to take that slightly more seriously.
Could we work more than in conjunction together? Like I could get like a petition going or something like that, right?
Considering it's in my ward, do I work with?
I would work with borough staff and we'll get, we can maybe get the numbers tweeted out or something, that you can contact District 6 to file complaint about the road conditions and just keep calling.
Yeah, I mean, I know the new, there's a new Pendott person who's in charge now, I think her name's Leslie.
Leslie Richards.
Yeah, and she's in, she's in White Marsh, right?
Right, but she's the Turnpike Head.
Right.
Well, she's both. She's the Secretary of Transportation and she was just named Chairman of the Turnpike Commission.
Right, so I guess, you know, what I could do is circulate that to the community. I'm sure they'd be thrilled to sign on to that. And maybe I could talk with Mr. Tutiño about getting that together.
The more they hear from you, the more likely it is that they'll respond.
Okay, and then the only other issue with the Grand is the construction behind it, now how they're building the new, I guess apartment building that'll be back there. People are saying that they're starting early and I wanted to confirm the, what the times that they're able to start construction in the morning. People are saying that it's before 7:00 and they thought it was strictly 7:00.
It's 7:00.
7:00 AM.
7:00. So I don't know what you could do about it, but if it's possible to, I don't want to have to videotape people working back there, but if somebody could be reminded that people are sleeping at 6:00 behind there, that'd be great.
Is that something our LNI department can work with the construction company on? It is.
I think our police officer just took note also.
Yes.
He's got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment?
Good evening, councilmen and women. My name's Tony DeFazio. I've been a resident in Concha Hocken for many years and effective this week. Resident once again, also operate a business, marketing communications agency under my same name. And I wanted to speak to council tonight with regard to the robust debate and conversation that's going on currently, the internet, community groups, civic groups, and among business owners. I have a lot of relationships with business owners over the years in Concha Hocken and there is this notion apparently that there may be some sort of discussion regarding a settlement concerning the super Wawa that was proposed for the E.F. Moore property at 12th and Fayette. I realize this is a sensitive and delicate issue. However, given the strong statements the previous council has made, Planning Commission, Zoning Hearing Board, with regard to rejecting the applicant's plan for that property, is there an opportunity to know whether or not such activity is occurring? I think the community would be very interested in knowing that. So I pose that first as a question, if there's an opportunity to respond to that.
I'm going to jump in on that question. I think that we really appreciate your input and your comments and we are aware of the content that has been on the internet and in social media as you suggested. However, at this time, council is not in a position to discuss, as there has been no formal application submitted and any of the, there is pending litigation on the matter that is currently happening. So again, we do appreciate your input and your comments and your question, but we are, if there is any formal application and when that formal application is submitted, you can be rest assured that the formal process will be transparent, will be publicly sent out in notice and advertisements, and you will have a chance to voice your concerns and to voice your opinions at that time.
Noted. Appreciate that, Borough Magic. May I ask another follow-up question?
Of course.
So it's been noted that work is going on at the property right now by the developer, so that obviously raises some eyebrows as to whether or not you can discuss it or not discuss it. So it's just raising concern whether something's going on that the public and the business community, particularly the retailers along Fayette Street, won't have an opportunity to weigh in. And the other question is, if council can't speak to it because of litigation, as you just said, can council speak to the developer?
Can council speak to the developer that's currently in litigation with?
Yeah, in other words, can council be speaking with the developer, but they can't be speaking with the residents?
Let me take this, because you're asking a question that sort of suggests an answer, so let me just tell you, Joe, there's two different things I think you're insinuating. One, as the borough manager correctly pointed out, there is an active appeal that came from a long zoning hearing board process that involves the zoning hearing board, the borough council as an intervenor, and other private parties. That case is subject to the normal constraints that council would have on litigation in any context. So parties through their lawyers may communicate about the possibility of settling, but ultimately in that context, all the parties would have to agree to a settlement. So if you've got three, four, five people, however many people are involved, it's not simply the borough and a developer or a property owner who could come together, make a deal, and make anything happen. That's active litigation that is multifaceted and has multiple parties, all of whom would have to agree. If you want to know if there are discussions happening among council for those parties, you have to talk to those parties because they would be in on those discussions. As to your second question, and the innuendo is that somehow something's happening in council at the moment, council acts on applications that are actually filed, when they are filed. We don't typically communicate before things are filed and when we do that, because council has to sit here and make a decision, they have to hold public hearings, there are rules, those kinds of things happen in public, where there's an advertised hearing process and a full opportunity for the public to provide input to council as they're making a decision. To that point, as the borough manager has pointed out, there hasn't been any application for anything filed on that site since the zoning hearing board application, which is currently under appeal.
Okay, just to be clear for my own edification, so if an application has not been filed and you have not, the borough has not received it, then there can't be any discussions occurring with respect to interest in refiling or redoing proposals?
No, you're here talking to us. I mean, you're here talking. Anybody can speak to council about anything.
Right.
If the rule were that nobody could talk at all, as soon as you said Wawa, I would have to ask you to sit down because you're not allowed to talk to council about it. Anybody who has an interest, the Moores, the developers, interested citizens, any party, anybody in the borough has the opportunity to discuss with council. If you're saying as councils, as individuals, yes. As a body, as a decision-making authority, those discussions, those hearings, all happen in this room, in a public forum that's advertised, notice is given on all of that sort of, these formal processes follow.
Understood, so one-on-one discussions could occur.
Just like I'm sure you could talk to council now, and anybody could talk to council about anything, not necessarily related to one project.
Okay, then I'll just close with a brief statement, and that is, I think that it's quite clear, given the previous council's vote, six to one, to deny that application. If it were to come up again in any form, no matter what the concessions are, I think there would be a groundswell of serious opposition from the business community in Concha Hocken, and I think that, we'll probably see, will be reflected in letters and petitions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any more public comment?
How you doing? Just recently got approved for the Dog Park.
Can you just state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry, Luke Smith. I grew up in Conchi, right down the street here on Fourth Ave, and sitting here and seeing all these building proposals and everything, and I saw the massive building they want to put down there on Washington Street, and I'm glad everyone's concerned about, you know, what buildings are going up and all. But the amount of traffic that has developed over the years, I mean, growing up, it was not like this, and just concerned about bringing more businesses in and creating such a problem that, you know, it takes half an hour almost to get over the bridge from where I live at the Riverwalk. So I just had to say that. I mean, comment's a comment and I don't know, maybe there's stuff in the works now about that, but the roadways are getting really jammed up. I'm sure everyone can agree on that, so just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more public comment? Council members? Mayor?
Nope.
Colleen?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Jane?
Fine.
No, thank you. I'm good.
I'm good.
I got one thing to say. Sunday, Torrey Smith from the Eagles, he had a camp down at Suckit Park and about 200 to 300 kids were down there. He had back football, football, and soccer, and with the Great Owling, and he should have came down there and said, we gave him permission to view Suckit Park.
We'll have to ask for him to come back. We'll have to make sure he comes back.
Well, I think he's, I think he's working about it. There were quite a few kids down there. I think they had a great time. And I was down there and look at it. Just remember that when he went...
I'd make it an annual.
He did it for all Concha Hocken kids. Concha Hocken kids and any kids around, they were down there. To my dismay, all of them were soccer more than anything, but that's another thing. But, okay, with that, no more public comment? Okay, meet in the journe.